All right, seeing the presence of a quorum, I'll call the Amherst School Committee meeting to order at six thirty-three on November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. I'm Sarah Marshall. I will ask everyone else at the table to introduce themselves, please, starting with Bridgette.
Bridgette Hines.
Jennifer Shaw.
Irv Rhodes.
Deb Leonard.
Dr. Z, Superintendent.
Thank you. Our first item on the agenda is public comment. We had no voicemail messages. I did attach written comments to the agenda. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to make a public comment? Yes, come forward. Please give us your name, where you're from, or your relationship to the district, and you have three minutes.
Yes, I am Manuel. Good evening.
Good evening.
I am Manuel Diaz. I am a resident here in Amherst for seven years, actually, seven years in January. Um, I am related to school committee. My daughter goes to Fort River. Um, and I support the community in different ways. I try to support the community in schools and outside definitely with dances and other stuff. And including supporting the community through the family center. And I was shocked to read the article that came out yesterday on the Gazette as, to say the least, when I learned, for instance, what invisible people is through the family center. I knew the concept. I couldn't grasp because I didn't grow up in such environment. But when I started working, or I wouldn't say working, participating with the family center, I realized that there is invisible people in Amherst, that there is people that you never see, people that work two or three jobs, immigrants, people that are in the kitchens, and their children goes to the school with my daughter, and I didn't realize. So to read about the lack of commitment to people of color, to the lack of to read about the lack of commitment of people of color, people that is underprivileged, people with special needs, it was, um, a lie. I cannot put it a different way. A lie, on my view, which I lived, which I've been here, which I visit. Also about, I was a little, I, funny enough, about a year ago, my wife and I were looking at data for how absentee happened during the pandemic. And we looked at the state data and we we saw that before the pandemic, the absenteeism was a lot higher than after the pandemic. So it triggered, the first quote from Dr. C. on the, on the Gazette yesterday, triggered that memory from about a year ago. My wife, who's also involved in higher education in this case, triggered that, and I was looking for it, and I found that effectively, at least on the state data, um, the absenteeism actually is coming down across the board. You know, there was a last year, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-two was a little bit higher than twenty twenty-three, which was a little bit higher than twenty twenty than the year before. But if you look at twenty sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, before the pandemic, everything was higher than now. So to state that, I'm like, of course, I don't have the data.
You have fifteen seconds.
Perfect. I do not have the data that is not public, but according to the public level data, that was it. But my point was in support, in firm support of the family center, which do serve Hispanic, Latinos, people of color, LGBTQ, and everyone else. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Martha, come forwards, tell us your name and your association with the district, and then you have three minutes.
Yes, my name is Martha Toro, and I am a retired teacher and principal from the Amherst Public Schools. And I am here in terms of the voice for the Latino caucus of Amherst in response to yesterday's article. The family center provides support services for students, families, and faculty. The restructuring intended to reduce absenteeism in school, which research shows is directly related to teaching and learning, is unsuitably misplaced. The family center focuses on students and family engagement, not on teaching and learning. The restructuring of the family center affects hundreds of students and many in the broader community. The plan is unrealistic and impossible task for one person in one school a day, another person a couple of days in a school. When will we hear about teaching and learning? Support services are not charged with this main mission of schooling. And this begs the question of why the article focuses on the family center when it talks about absenteeism. Amherst is a sanctuary town, especially at the historic moment when so many are afraid to speak and even send their children to school. The staff of the family center were the voice of silent, invisible, and marginalized families in our town. Latinos are the largest group, the second largest group represented in the district, and are the group who have the least support and have suffered dearly trying to improve their lives. The family center has been serious supporting the families for years through three tiers of growing need. Tier one, they have the after-school program backpack project, clothing and food insecurity, enrollment support, bilingual support, the information hub for families, pathway to achievement, referral to local organizations, River Valley Counseling, Smiles, which is a dental van, the toy drive, winter clothes, and this is for all families. Tier two, the after-school subsidy, before-school program, the Amherst College Partnership, first-generation student support, the holiday drive, homeless student support, this is Mackenzie Vento, foster care, Juntos We Place, a program who brings principals to the community, facilitating safe housing, and parent groups for advocacy and how to speak, sorry. Juntos We Play, referral process for the Asian American, and this is for moderate families. Tier three, undocumented families, steps to success, comprehensive support to families, students, family fleeing, domestic violence.
Your time is up, Martha.
Can I just, it's one more sentence.
Yep, finish, please.
Parent groups for advocacy and how to speak with school and teachers. This service is the most needy, and these services have been critical since the inception of the family center. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to make a public comment? No. All right, then. Thank you. Moving on, chair's update. I posted my little update to the agenda. I just wanted to ask with regard to last night's town council meeting, how many other school committee members were able to watch or listen? So, most, okay. Then I expect you join with me in thanking those members of the public who spoke so strongly and supported the schools. That was wonderful. Do any other members have announcements or updates? Deb.
Yeah, just on the, not a lot, actually, on the elementary school building project. It's still at the Attorney General's office. The town did a press release on it, which I was going to find, but I didn't. So they were just waiting. They had hoped to get the Attorney General's decision last week, and now it's the end of this week, and they know that it's pressing. I guess the only relevant piece of information I have is the bids were good for thirty days. All of the general contractors agreed to extend their bid thirty days, which brings us to the beginning of December again. The timeline is supposed to remain the same, so it's not as if, at least up until the beginning of December, we're looking at pushing anything back. That's all I got.
Anyone else? No? All right. Superintendent's update.
All right, so, Amherst, are we on?
Yes.
Good job. All right, so, good evening, everyone. As always, I start off with our three district priorities: student safety and well-being, healing and stabilization of the district, and data and accountability for equity. And I think tonight I'm going to focus in on priority number three and its importance. But first, let's start off by talking about, and these are the three points I'm going to focus on. I know there's been a series of public comment today. I know I spoke to the chair. After, well, after receiving a couple, and I told her I would be tweaking my update to answer the questions around the family center. But as always, I do not only want to focus on what is happening in one, because I also want to talk about other things that we're doing. And so definitely want to make sure we talk about the fact that this week is American Education Week. We launched that yesterday in districts, I have to say S., but in the district, with a video where all of the central office educators thank an educator for their work that they have done and their influence for their life. So everyone talked about a teacher or an educational experience that impacted them, and we're truly, truly grateful. Today was, in terms of NEA, the National Education Association, today was where we're supposed to engage families. And so from the central office, we asked families to send in videos just thanking an educator around, you know, something that's impactful to them and what has been done. So we released that video this evening. Thank you, Seth. And that's really a really great experience. I think tomorrow we're doing a YouTube Live where we are going to announce who gets to be the superintendent for the day on Thursday. And so that is definitely going to be done, where we have the names in a randomizer. We had, the largest number of students to submit was at the region. But we did have students from Cracker and Wildwood and Fort River that asked to be the superintendent of Amherst for the day. So on Thursday, we will have three superintendents who get to join on and see what it is to run their district. No, that's Thursday. Wednesday, we'll be thanking the paraeducators tomorrow, actually. And so we'll be going to the schools to thank them. As the time I left, I didn't receive their package. I'm hoping it's there in the morning so that we can go around and give them our token of thanks for the hard work, because we would not be able to do it without our educators, support professionals. And Friday is Thank a Substitute Day, so we'll just be sending out a thank you to our substitute teachers. So when I came in, from the time I did my interview, I explained that I am a data-driven individual. I would come in and I would engage, and I was charged with a task, which was, one, to kind of reform, change, and ensure that we build upon the successes of the district. I think that what I hear a lot of times is not the positive of what I say, but I read the article that was sent this morning, thank you, Sarah. And I did reach out, Seth reached out, and I did reach out to Scott. And we talked about the initial quote in the top of it, because it was taken out of context. And in speaking with Scott, it was a combination of, one, I did have an interview with him, but it was a combination of what he heard at a live school committee meeting as well. So it was not all in full context of that conversation. But we did have a conversation, and if you continue to read through the article, you'll see towards the bottom where I talk about the fact that there's partnerships and things that are expanding, and in actuality, the work that's being done in terms of the collaborative, the programs like Villa and Morning Movement, those are programs that we plan to continue, but we also are looking for avenues and ways to implement our own programs. And so things that will continue to expand and to serve our families. And I think that in terms of how we are often reactionary without explanation. And thank you, Jennifer, for also chiming in today and saying, hey, I think you should explain it. And I said, we're already on it. I wanted to go through what occurred with the family center that got us to where we are today. And I'm going to do what I think that the community is not often accustomed to. I'm going to delve into some of the background information. So bear with me this evening. So when I came in, upon my entry, as later in my entry plan, I had one-on-one meetings with everyone. But I also told the division leaders in the district that I was going to do an audit of every division. This audit just came in where I was looking at the data, asking questions, and asking the directors to present information around, what do you do? And what does your division look like? Because I'm also learning the district and the environment that I'm walking into. These are the critical things that I asked the family center director to share with me. This is not the document, this is the bulleted points of what I asked in my email. I asked for what are the personnel duties and roles? Ensuring that, you know, what are staff responsibilities are, and how do they align with the family center objectives? What was the workload distribution? Looking at how the work was equitably distributed. And this also came, and I'll talk about data, because as I look at staff surveys, exit surveys from the district, I looked at some of the concerns around the distribution of work and labor in different divisions. The numbers of families served, I asked not just in terms of your tier-three families, but in terms of your tier-one or tier-two. And I didn't even ask the tiers, because I didn't learn about the tiers and how the families were tiered until I met with the director. So I asked, how are our families served? What are the demographics? Who are the community groups that we engage in? What does that look like? I also went into the demographics to ensure that our programs are inclusive and equitable. At our meeting in September, this discussion was that that data was not readily available. Many of the data was not available for the discussion, because the data had not been tracked in that frame or way. And so it wasn't available to have that discussion in September around the work of the family center, to talk about specifically the demographics of the family served, or the number of families served. And this was going back, my request was within the last two to three years. So this started, the conversation started in September around all of the things that were emerging in terms of the work being done at the family center, and how we can support and expand that programming. And so since that date in September, we've had subsequently about can I have my papers? No, probably my bag. We've had subsequently about a couple of meetings, because the director and I have engaged, I think we engaged up to yesterday, not preparing for today, around what, how we can come to a common understanding of how we work. And we had it in September, we had two in September on the audit and the audit template. And then in October, Dr. Gravara emailed me this document after the initial meeting, explaining what the steps to success program was, some of the main roles and responsibilities that are included in those individuals, the two liaisons. And at that time, we had just came in and was going through a lot of the budgetary information. If you notice, a lot of the things that were done, based on what she sent to me, were parent-teacher conferences, lunch groups, individual student meetings, parent and family engagement and support via referrals, curriculum planning, the after-school programs, which was the prioritization of the forms, the referrals to outside programs. They attended IEP and five oh four meetings. They conducted home visits as needed during emergencies, drop-offs, pickups, and other things. And so this came, and then in early October, as we're going through, the same time that came, we realized that there was a budgetary impact that was done to what was happening. And I want to be very specific to what occurred. So the budgetary impact specifically, and I know that another committee member, Bridgette, asks about this question, was that, so I wanted the community to know that your questions and concerns do not go on deaf ears, because the committee members do engage and ask questions for clarity, is that this past June, June twenty twenty-five, Amherst College, no, this, what year were you in? Twenty twenty-four. Okay, good. Good job. Thank you. This past June, twenty twenty-four, it's been a long day. I'm planning for the school calendar, you guys, bear with me. This past June, twenty twenty-four, Amherst College gifted the school district a hundred thousand dollars. Historically, they have gifted the district around seventy or seventy thousand dollars. This past June, they gifted the school district a hundred thousand dollars. Ninety thousand of that gift was used to fund the steps to success liaison position for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. What that means is that this position sat on the budget, and we were in arrears, which means that it wasn't funding for that position. On October second, I was informed that only twenty percent of that position was actually budgeted on region appropriations for the twenty-four, twenty-five position. This salary, meaning that there were not enough funds to cover the position beyond November. So in an effort, in an, I'm sorry, I have to, I'm seeing faces. No, I know, but I want to make sure that as there are narratives being told about the work that's being done, there is clear understanding of what occurred for the shifts and changes, so that we are in clear compliance and doing what we need to do. And so the individuals do not think that I'm making decisions in a hurtful manner, but I'm actually a hundred percent taking into consideration not just student impact, but the impact of my staff. And so to have someone work and not have funds to cover their position beyond November, and they think and they trust the district to ensure that they have the funding for them, it is unethical. And to me, it is just not right. That's the basis I'm going to say. So based on the information and to preserve the position within the district in alignment with what the director said that they do, we worked with the budget office to determine how we could come up with a solution to keep the functionality of the position, as well as ensure that eighty percent was appropriated. What we did was we were able to appropriate that eighty percent onto Amherst appropriations in order to show that the services match the allocation of funds. The position then was rerouted where eighty percent of the time was to serve Amherst schools, which in alignment with the work that was submitted by the director that they were doing, is now school-based. So three days of the week, this individual serves So three days of the week, this individual serves the Amherst schools, right? Two days, they serve within the region. They still serve, there are, there's a new title, which is Student and Family Engagement Liaison. But they still are under the direction of Dr. Guevara. As a matter of fact, they were meeting with her on Monday. Dr. Guevara assured me yesterday that she has met with the principals to ensure a smooth transition and that they are working to make sure that this is done. The second position, there was a misalignment of funding allocation of that position. Which means that at some point, this individual was placed solely on Amherst's budget a hundred percent. But it didn't match the work that they were doing currently within their role, and that was the out-of-school time coordinator. This individual was was not aligned in their funding allocation with the work that they were doing. Because if you look at the work and what was happening, this work was happening across all three districts. Serving the region, serving Amherst, serving Pelham. To ensure that the districts were in compliance and there was an alignment of services, this individual was then. And again, I met with everyone one-on-one when I came in, I had in-depth conversations. And when I first came in, one of the key things that I did is I asked HR to give me the job descriptions. And resumes of every individual within the district, so I can understand what they were doing. And their qualifications to do it. And then I also met with the majority of individuals in central office. I learned about Mr. Shamble, I learned about his passions, I learned about the fact that he has a master's in educational leadership. And I learned about the fact that I, one day, he wanted to progress into doing more work to serve our students. Ideally as well, I learned that the work and the after-school programs and the out-of-school programs that we're doing, he was ma- basically facilitating. As a lea- as a as a touch point at the district versus his passion to create and promote programs and facilitate programs. For students in addition to the programs that we were already running. And so as such, we reorged and based on the data, we took that position and made a school support and engagement liaison. Also, at the time, there was a critical need to shift and to support in terms of Pelham, in terms of the work that was being done there. And for us, in terms of our academic data, to create programming to actually match and support what we needed for our students. For example, students leaving Amherst in sixth grade and going to the region, we wanted to create a transition program, summer bridge. And I talked about that last night in the listening lounge and started to, starting to get some feedback around that. And then, again, being data-driven, looking at some of our exit survey data. And looking at the fact that there was complaints about not just low morale, but also toxic work environments. How do we support families? What's happening? And so we really started to look and delve deep. I'm not, I want to go into the pictures of what I look at. And so when we talk about attendance data, it's very critical that I say this. What type of superintendent would I be if I only look at the overarching broad view? And not delve into how are the subgroups doing, what are we doing to support them? And how every child, are they receiving an education? Because that is what equity is. Equity is not equality. Are they receiving what they need to succeed? That is equity. When we look at our data and we delve deeply, I want to point out this report that I have up in. My vision, it's there, but. When you delve more deeply into what's happening in terms, and this is specifically Amherst. If you look at the overarching data that's on the DESI website, it looks great because there's a decline in numbers, right? When you start to delve deeper, which I did, you'll notice that in twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Our all, our overarching number of students total was one thousand sixty-one students. Our numbers of critic, chronically absent students were four hundred and thirty-eight students. If we want to see, like this evening, the conversation is around how do we support our Hispanic, students of Hispanic descent? Let's focus in on that. Our Hispanic and Latinx students, the total number of twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three was two hundred and fifty-three students. That amounted to twenty, about twenty-four percent of the uh of the average student body population. Their average number of days absent, we can round up to seventeen days. We can go across and see that the average absent rate, the percentage of the year missed is nine percent. We can then see of the four hundred and thirty-eight students that are chronically absent in Amherst, one hundred and fifty-three of those students. Were his, of Hispanic descent. We can then see that of that, that one hundred and fifty-three represents sixty percent of the two hundred and fifty-three Hispanic students. Within the Amherst district. Let's look now at twenty-three, twenty-four, last school year. One thousand three students, right, was our total number of students. Of that, two hundred and fifty-three students are Hispanic and Latinx descent. The total percentage are twenty-five percent of our of our total population. The average number of days is thirteen days and that these students were absent. If we look at the av- the average absence rate, it's eight percent. If you notice, the number of chronically absent students is one hundred and forty-six students. And if you look at the percentage of that demographic, that one forty-six represents fifty-eight percent. Which we can say is approximately sixty percent of the overarching percentage of students of Hispanic and Latinx descent in Amherst that are absent. And so when I talk about, and then on the top, what I asked my team to pull is based on our first twenty-six days of school. Look at our projected rate thus far. If you, and again, I am looking at. What are our gains? Yes, we are making gains. We are making gains. You can see that there's a two percent de- decrease. You can see that in two years, one in two students of Hispanic descent had chronic absenteeism. You can see that absenteeism rate for Hispanic students has gone down by two percent. But I'm also looking at the fact that the percentage of students in the past two years in that subgroup. Exceeds fifty percent of that subgroup that has been chronically absent. And so when I speak to the data, it, there there is things that I am looking for in how do we serve and what does that look like? When we talk again about our MCAS scores, and I didn't pull the i-ready. But when we talk about our MCAS scores and we talk about meeting and exceeding, again, we look at how are our students who are meeting and exceeding? So these are the students who are meeting and exceeding. Twenty percent are meeting and exceeding of Hispanic descent, which means that eighty percent are not. And this is in E L A. It says Amherst Pelham, but this is English Language Arts for just Amherst. Let's look at math. Yes.
Which E L A?
Twenty twenty-four, the end of.
No, which grade?
Um I'd be, all all three through, three through six, right? Three through six. Amherst. Um this is now our math for three through six. And our, again, if we look at meeting and exceeding in comparison to the other subgroups and demographics. You'll see that twenty-six percent of our students of Hispanic descent are meeting and exceeding. Which means that seventy percent, and I'm I'm rounding up to the thirty, seventy percent are not. When we talk about science, you'll see that thirty-six percent are meeting and exceeding. I'm going to round up and say that that's forty. We have sixty percent that are not. So when I, when, when I speak to data and what we're doing. What I'm trying to find and trying to work with the team to do is to expand the services to meet the needs of our students. Because what we're seeing is that there's a trend. And the trend shows that the shift in data or the shift in operations or how we operate needs to happen. So we can start to see the fruits and bring successes to fruition. So it may be a little bit uncomfortable, but in in what I saw, based on what the director submitted to me. In terms of the supports that these individuals provide, shifting them to the school level. Would not have done anything but provided a more direct impact and support to the schools and to the programming. Because they are still reporting to that director. The coat drive is going on this week. I saw the email today about the Christmas giveaway. Um and I want to talk about what is the family center today. So outside of Mr. Shamble, who is under the superintendent's arm and working. To create more programs and work with Pelham and the other schools, because again, funding. We have Dr. Guevara, we have Mildred, and we have Alexa, who still reports to her three days at Amherst, two days in the region. Um I also was informed, because I believe that there there is cell phones, so the director had informed me. That one of the best ways for to engage families, they don't always call or they don't always respond via call or email. So it's through text messages. Um so they they still has that, have that for communication. And we're still short one position, but we're working on that based on funding and trying to figure out how do we adequately fund. The second position so that the work can continue. So I think that based on just how everything was contextualized, it didn't give a clear picture. And I hope that the community is now clear on the processes that happen. And how we are truly trying to keep to the essence of what happens in the family center. How do we support the families that are most marginalized and in need? But build and rebuild, bridge that gap between the school and the community. Because at the end of the day, it's like the commentator said, we need to talk about teaching and learning. But if they are not in school, if they are not present, then the learning cannot take place. So when I talk, I I can't, I'm I'm, I I can't shift everything at the same time. Um but I do know that I, and I've also said that I'm walking through schools, I'm engaging with our educators, and we have really strong educators in our schools. We have very dynamic educators and teachers in our classrooms. I think they work very hard and they plan rigorous lessons, and I think that in any school system, we have work to do. I also think that if a child is not present, like what are we addressing right now? So right now, I would like to address, let's get them there. And as we continue to work on the operational standpoints and moving towards. I also have done a review of teaching and learning, but I'd like to delve in and have a deeper dive around that. Shift around what are we doing and see the needs around consistency in instruction. And with that, I would say that my entry plan findings um will be released in December. Where we will be talking about strategies around all of the findings and all of the audits that were done throughout the district. And I will continue to leave it with love. Love is never easy. No one said that. Sometimes the the truth and the facts that come with love makes it hard. But it doesn't mean that it's from a place of disdain. I actually feel that we have great work that's being done. In our schools, in our districts. I firmly believe that in essence, to align with our budgetary requirements. As well as with the programs and start to see the shifts, it's kind of like trying to do something different. But because it's framed in a different way, it does not mean that it's broken. Does that mean it is disbanded? I actually think it provides us an opportunity to see, to see the impact of that work on a school level. And possibly shift what we're having and recreate that model in each school building for the opportunity to expand that work. Because that's where the teaching and learning happens. That's my update. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Z. Do committee members have any questions? Yep.
Yeah, um just a question and a and a comment and an observation. So would it be relatively easy to provide updates to this data as the absenteeism data? As the um as the year progresses?
Yes. So um one of the things that we're doing, and I I think I talked about this as a part of my goals. Is we're actually launching a dashboard, a data dashboard. Um and that's where the M the MCAS data came from, but the the provider had already, through DESI. Did the the data dashboard in terms of MCAS. So they, through that data dashboard, we will be working to have timely updates on our attendance data, instructional data as well. So yes, it would be easy to continually update this.
Thank you. And um when we were talking about superintendent goals. And I went through my laundry list of things that I had come to understand needed to be addressed over the course of the year, and you told me you're not superwoman.
Yes.
And that you needed to have the mechanisms in place to, the the data mechanisms in place to make some impact. Apparently, you are superwoman.
Thank you.
At least preliminarily.
I'm trying.
Yeah, okay.
Anyone else? Bridget.
Yeah, um thanks so much for putting this together and sort of explaining where your thinking is at. The question I had was about there just being one person. Is that other vacant position going to be filled?
So we're trying to, when we found out a lot of the budgetary impacts and where things were. We're right now trying to work to see what we can do to fill it this year. Um how how we can actually make that a a reality. Um because we understand the work that's being done. So I don't want to say, I can't say no, because I did, I did tell the director that we will definitely work on filling the second position. Um and so it is on my radar and we are working on that as we go through the budget.
And then just a quick follow-up on that related to staffing and what about the people who are working with morning mentoring or the.
So that, that wasn't people, that was one person. That was Mr. Shamble, and he still does that. That's a part of his current duties. So we had a meeting with Amherst Rec um to guarantee them because they were concerned, because they heard differently. He has been working with them, he works with the after-school program, he's still the point of contact. The only difference is now that he uh he's working in addition to that, he's also working to expand the programs that we provide in terms of. How can we fill the gap and what can we do to support?
And I would note that's a regional program, the Morning Movement, yeah. But I'm glad to hear the answer in the question. Uh I would just note, hold on, hold on, about the uh chronic absenteeism, the data you've shown and the need to. Try to get closer to the families to fix uh this problem that um chronic absenteeism is one of the. Problems identified in our Student Opportunity Act Plan, and it's a priority to try to reduce those numbers. Yeah. Irv, did you?
Yes, I was, I'm always intrigued by numbers where you have a group. Uh for instance, the um Latinx Hispanic group, in terms of MCAS, you had twenty-six percent. Who were met or exceeded expectations and the rest didn't. Well, that's an interesting group to know, need to know more about. Similarly, for absenteeism, single. So I would really like to know uh more about this group and if that data is available to look at on a meta level.
So we're building, and and that's why we're pulling pieces from where it's available, so we could delve more deeply. Um and to kind of have a deeper and richer conversation. I think the last time, the first time that I met with the Latinx caucus, and the both individuals are here, they spoke this evening. One of the things that we talked about was the different instructional approaches and somehow how it looks when it's cultural relevance. And and what it looks like in terms of, you know, understanding the culture and how that works. And so for me, this is why it's not, it's not like a hit or miss or one thing. There are multiple. There are multiple factors that come into students' teaching, to 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 student achievement. And what is it going to to take for a student to achieve and do better? So we're not like, it's going to be hard to pinpoint one thing. I think that when we delve into by school, it looks differently too. I think for some schools, your chronic absenteeism may be going up, whereas your ten, ten days are going down. Um so it's never, it's not going to be one thing, but we have to address something. But I do agree, Irv, that we can delve deeper and kind of pull our data by subgroups.
And and it's really important, uh because um. The group, the group that is is uh not meeting. There are lessons to be learned. And knowing more about that group, those groups. And when you can start to compare and contrast and you dive de- dive de- deeper into the data. It really provides the opportunity for learning. For teaching and learning. It's really, 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 really important uh to know that. And and it's, you know, for me, as a former teacher who always got the lowest performing groups, which I loved. Because once I had the data and once I looked into who I had, they always, always improved. Because the data gave me the insights in order to take actions in the classroom.
Agreed.
Okay, yes.
So, um, yeah, I mean, I fully agree with following the data and locating. More of these services directly at the schools makes the most sense, so that then everyone in the building can all be pushing in the same direction. So I really support those pieces of it. I wanted to talk to something a little bigger than I'm sort of getting a. I wanted to talk to something a little bigger than I'm sort of getting a lot of feedback on, which is like, there's this confluence of factors, like, people feel like there were statements made about the Comanantes program, they feel the loss of some key leaders in the Latina community here in Amherst due to, you know, different circumstances that I know the circumstances of behind the scenes, and they make a lot of sense, but from outside, people are feeling like maybe, and then with this, the family center. So I just wanted to give you an opportunity, maybe, to speak of your commitment to this community, especially, like, you know, what's, I think, a lot of people feel like is a difficult time.
And we're speaking specifically to the Latinx community?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'm going to say this to the Latinx community. I think that, one, there are decisions that, and I have not, and I know a couple of the commanders, I fired individuals, I have not fired anyone at all. But I know that when you look through a specific lens based on your experiences, that many times you feel like something that has happened to you before is happening again. And I truly hope that I can have the opportunity to step into a role and come from the lens of where I speak to, which is that all children matter, and equity means providing children with what they need. I truly support the work of all, of like, every individual, the Latinx community, the LGBTQIA+ community, our Black community, our Caucasian community, and I think that what ends up happening right now is that there is a misunderstanding that needs to be cleared. So I do not, I hope that we can continue to have an open dialogue to make sure that it doesn't seem aggressive. I think we had one brief conversation, and I say brief, because I think it could have been longer, I think we could have hit on some deeper topics that needed to be hit on. I think that what is missed is the fact that I may not have the full context of what occurred to make individuals feel that I am now targeting them. I feel that because I didn't say what I want, like, I didn't say, I think the misunderstanding around Comanantes is also something that I've had to clarify, and I need to clarify the fact that I was hired, and when I came in, there's Fort River. Fort River is a school building that I'm talking about, and the fact that at Fort River, there are two programs that are running concurrently that is actually causing the school to function as two schools under one building. However, I said that once it's a well-oiled program, once, like, Comanantes is a gem. It's like, I don't know of any other school district that has around, so far I've been looking, that has a bilingual education, fully bilingual education program with another program in their school. I've also been looking at what programs who have had those two strands, and what has happened to them, what has caused, the research, and when I talked about the research with the pros and cons, it wasn't to say that this means that this is the pros and cons of what I'm going to do to Comanantes. It was to talk about, hey, we may need to make some shifts. I've also said publicly that maybe we need to expand Comanantes, maybe we need to look at the fact that Comanantes, where it is, in Fort River, with Explorers, is actually giving, like, there are parents who have written or have spoken to that feel like Explorers is not an adequate program, and that's unfair to Fort River and Fort River educators, because they work very hard, and the Explorers program is an adequate program. But I think that when there is a gem and individuals value that gem, all they see is that's where they want their students to be, and sometimes the other program may not get the benefit of the highlight. And so for me, I am actually working with my team to see where can we take Comanantes, especially with our budgetary restrictions? How do we expand on that program? How do we make it work within the realm of what we have? Knowing that at a certain point, we are going to be like, technically, we're going to shift our sixth graders to one school, do we have the opportunity to expand that and create a full bilingual education school? Like, maybe we take Fort, the new Fort, I call it Fort Wild River some days, but we take the Fort River, and do we make that a fully Spanish immersion program? So when I speak about, I'm not sure where Comanantes could go, it's not to regress the program, it's how do we make sure that individuals understand that under the roof of Fort River, Fort River is viable, it is thriving, there are great educators in both programs. Like, that's what I speak about. I speak from the superintendent lens, that Fort River is an awesome school that houses two programs, but one program is no longer just a program, it has grown to the point that it can stand on its own two feet and be a school by itself, and that's where we need to consider. So I think that for me, when the community engages or listens, I would like for them to kind of email and ask me to expand, or if they're unsure, say, hey, you said this, and a couple people have, like, teachers have emailed, like, what are you, I'm hearing that you're getting, I'm telling them, I am not getting rid of Comanantes, where did you get that from? I am trying to say that Fort River is an awesome school, there are two programs, and one program is not getting really great things. It's kind of disparaging what's being said about the Explorers program and how people feel about it in the community, whereas they have great educators in both. And so for me, it is, Comanantes is great, let's sturdy the budget, let's sturdy the programming, and let's see how we can make it stand on its own two feet and market it as a full Spanish immersion program. Like, let's do that. Great. I also want individuals to know that there are some personnel issues that impacted what's happening, and I can see what occurred, and I can reflect on the lens and see what it looks like, but it's not something that wasn't mutually done and agreed upon, and not something I can't go deeply into. And so for me, I have not been close to any community. I'm actually proud of my background, which has Hispanic descent, like, coming from, my mom is from, my family's from Aruba, my dad is from Carasau, they live in St. Martin. I was born on St. Croix, Santa Cruz, 20 miles, you know, like a 30-minute, 40-minute flight from Puerto Rico. I don't have an issue, or I don't, I don't do that, and I don't come from a place of inequitable or equality. I come from a place of, this is what is in front of me, and how do I solve what I have to solve? But how do I work to make sure that our children have what they need? And how do you expand upon the jewels that you currently have? And that's it. I hope that clarifies, and I hope that I am open to my next Latinx meeting, that we can have a deeper discussion and a richer discussion around how we can improve instruction for our students, so our absenteeism rates can change and our instructional rates can change.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to the draft minutes from our October meeting. Does anyone have any suggested changes? Jennifer?
There's just one spot where Ms. McIntyre's first name has a typo.
Tell me where.
Uh, okay.
Was it a T-O or T-A instead of?
Number 2A, it just says Tony instead of Tanya.
Oh.
Last sentence of 2A.
Thank you. Anything else? Anyone else? All right. Someone move to accept the minutes as amended?
I move to accept the minutes from October 15th as amended.
Thank you.
Second?
Thank you, Deb. All right. All in favor, raise your hand. Thank you. Okay. Warrant report.
So I don't have any warrants to read tonight, and I'm working with, I'm going to be working with the Budget Office on a new improved process for reporting on warrants, so more to come at our next meeting.
Ooh, it sounds so intriguing. All right, we do have a gift.
I can do it.
Go ahead.
I move that we accept the following gifts from Amherst College number 14789 to support Comanantes dual-language enrichment in honor of collaboration with Amherst College Spanish Senior Seminar Students, $600, and from Amherst College number 15299 for Comanantes dual-language enrichment, $550, for a cash total of $1,150.
All right. I'll move to accept those gifts. Is there a second? Second. Any discussion or questions? All right, all in favor? It's unanimous, thank you. Thank you very much to Amherst College.
Dr. Z wanted to? Can I ask that we rearrange the new business and probably move FY26 school considerations up so my team can present?
Oh.
Just so.
Yes, that, yes, I wasn't, didn't know they were here to present. Right. So let me just comment on A first. All right, the private, this application from 80 acres to become a private school. Yesterday, Ms. Wallace withdrew that application, which is certainly her prerogative. I do not know why, it doesn't matter why, but that means we have nothing to vote on, and that matter is concluded. All right, so that done, we will, yes, move up agenda item E, fiscal year 26 school considerations. Dr. Z, you can invite your staff.
While they come up to present, this is a different perspective of the fiscal. What the team, this is more of the academic and social-emotional team, and so what I wanted them to present is, what are the school considerations for FY26 from their lens? So they're going to talk a little bit about what the work that they're doing now, and then also talk about, as they're talking about the work that they're doing now, how does that look, or what are some things that may be coming forward with the, in fiscal year 26, with what we're talking around the Amherst budget, as well as how does that show up programmatically? And I think that's critical for us to really pull back the curtains and start over-explaining a lot of our work, so that we can adequately just address that. So I know we're going to start off, and let me turn this on, by having Maureen speak to our mental health and behavioral services, and then we'll go from there. So they're going to control it, and I'm going to be quiet.
So thank you, everyone. It's nice to be here again. The first update I want to give you all is that we did have our welcoming schools training two weeks ago today, and it went off, I think, without a hitch. It was much more smooth than I expected it to be, because it was all virtual, it was in each school. I think we had over 350 people trained. I don't have the exact number, because some trainings took place with people in large groups, but we can definitely verify that at least 354 people were trained, so that was, that was a big success, and the feedback so far has been largely positive. We did the pre-assessment work, we haven't done the post-assessment work yet, they'll be sending that to us, and then we'll do that again when we do our next training. So that training's done, and it went off really well, very pleased about that. In terms of the mental health needs and projections moving forward at the elementary level in Amherst, it continued, we continue to have very high needs. I'm glad that Ruthie is here tonight. Okay. So Ruthie is one of our famous counselors at Fort River. Ruthie, we talk about gems, Ruthie's a gem in the district. So we have high needs, we have high, we have lagging social skills from the students being home, you know, for over a year during the pandemic. Doreen Reed and I went today and met with a student in one of the elementary schools who is nearing the end of elementary, but was home for first grade, and we spent over an hour with the student talking about the dynamics that are taking place with her peer group, and it's clear there's some lagging social skills, there's some conflict that they don't really know how to resolve yet. It was actually, I had a great day, we had a blast. We spent over an hour with the student and did some role-playing, which was really fun. So I don't see the mental health and behavioral needs of our students going down any time in the near future, and we, I would say, at the elementary level at Crocker, Fort River, and Wildwood, we have really amazing counselors who do a lot of heavy lifting every single day. And right now, we're down a counselor at Crocker, because she transferred to Fort, interim, to become an interim assistant principal at Fort River. So Derek and his crew, they're holding everything together down at Crocker, they've got a great team there. Fort River, Ruthie's at Fort River, Wildwood the same. I just don't see anything changing in the near future, and we definitely have to continue to put our resources into having strong counselors, having really solid teams that are working well together, and unfortunately, I think that the mental health needs of younger students are increasing rather than decreasing, and the types of things that we're seeing with our younger students are concerning. You know, there, any type of mental health issue that you can think of, they're dealing with. We have younger students with eating disorders, we have younger students with lots of psychiatric issues that are taking place, and our counselors are doing the best they can to handle this, and we just have to continue to work as a team. Very grateful to Dr. Z for placing me in this position, because it enables us to have a centralized focus on mental health needs in the district, and we're continuing to monitor the behavior and the bullying episodes that are coming forward. And, you know, each school is doing a really good job of, it's a major project to do the bullying investigations, it takes a lot of time, it takes a lot of, it takes a lot of navigating through a lot of issues, because it's, oftentimes, it's, sometimes there are longstanding issues that have gone on for a couple of years, and like I said, it's, a lot of it's sort of lagging social skills that the students have about working through conflicts, and then the bullying, the people who are doing the bullying investigations do a lot of work with families, so it's very, very complex work. It's very involved, and I think the needs are going to be pretty great for the next year or two. I don't see them diminishing at all.
Thank you.
Hi there. Just some highlights from special education 504 in the elementary schools. Just to start with our preschool, preschool and Elizabeth and her team are currently working on 27 special education referrals for our youngest learners. Moving over to Crocker with Derek and Alicia, the number of students in their building right now is currently 301 as of yesterday, the number of students on IEPs are 103. 504, we have 17 students currently accessing accommodations through our 504 process. Moving to Fort River, two schools, also two programs, two specialized programs at Fort River. It's the AMES program for students with neurodiversity and students who are on the spectrum, and also our building blocks program for students with social, emotional, and behavioral issues that we're trying to educate in the least restrictive environment. The number of students at Fort River currently enrolled at 378, those of whom that are accessing IEP services are 97, those of whom who are accessing 504 services and accommodations are 13. Wildwood, Allison and Diane and her team welcomed seven intensive need students to join the ILC community, for students with significant intellectual challenges. Seven. Causes for plus. The ILC team is also doing an amazing job. Wildwood currently has 320 students enrolled in the elementary school, 84 of whom are on IEPs, 16 of which are accessing accommodations through a 504. Special needs are growing in Amherst, people are moving to Amherst for our special education programs, our amazing staff, not only at the building level, but at central office, who are working really hard behind the scenes to make sure everything is running smoothly for students with significant needs. We have an out-of-district coordinator who's also working new to us this year, Nancy Stewart, she was formerly the educational team leader at the middle school, who is meeting and greeting all of the students who are out of district and also visiting the schools, so they have a touch point, and we can see how they're doing in the out-of-district placements. Again, I just highlight our needs are growing. Irv, I see your shock, and it's.
Well.
Yeah.
I was shocked.
Yeah.
And I know it's not time, but I would love to have that information that you just presented us, given to us in some form.
Happy to share that tomorrow morning.
If you could share that with us, because there's some astounding numbers in there.
Data is important.
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you. Oh, sorry.
Why don't we hold questions?
Hold questions, okay.
Good evening. And for anyone listening to this and you might think, why are they only mentioning three elementary schools? We're at Amherst School Committee. So I don't want anyone to misunderstand. Pelham and our middle school and high school are doing great things as well. And I have the pleasure and the honor of leading our Office of Teaching and Learning. I think I've heard that mentioned more today than I have since I've been here. So go OTL. Our class sizes right now, in average in Amherst, it's about 20 students per class. It's important that we think about our class sizes as we move forward in looking towards FY 26. One of the things we want to think about is our programmatic considerations. How do we expand what's going well in our schools? What great things are happening in terms of offerings? Be it a course, a science, for instance, the Science Garden, how do we expand those things? And so as we look to FY 26, that's going to be where we're looking. How do we enhance? So I, I want to say that we want to market our schools as the place to come to really get an excellent education. And one of the things we have to do is highlight what's going well. With that, one of the things that I think will attract teachers to our school district is professional learning. Embedded professional learning really is a, I think, a strong point for most people when they think about their leadership in terms of being an educator. I was a classroom teacher for 25 years. And so it's, I've done that longer than I've done anything else. And so I know that embedded PD can make a big difference. The other thing that's going to happen FY 26 is we're going to make sure that we are focused on all subgroups, not just the overall. I think I said this last time when I did the MCAS report. It's easy to be swayed by group level data, the whole group. And that is excellent and we want to highlight it, but we have to. If we expect to do something about it, we have to actually look at it, no matter how hard it is. And so that's going to be what we do professionally with our professional learning. We're going to make sure we have professional development that highlights how teachers can really make changes in their teacher practice to really address equitable needs for our students. How do we find in time, in classroom, changes that will really shift student learning? And that takes practice, that takes learning, that takes collaboration among teachers. And those things are the things we want to focus on. As we look to FY 26, we want to find ways for teachers to do that without having to leave their building without a sub or without pulling them away. And that means we have to really rethink how we approach professional learning in our district and what that means because we have excellent principals. Excellent principals that want to provide their teachers with robust learning. But they also have to balance that with, how do I cover the classroom for kids? Because we are here to educate the kids. And so we've been blessed with a great staff in OTL who's out there trying their best with grant writing and providing just different levels of interactions with schools. So in FY 26, you're going to look for a really robust office of teaching and learning. We're going to be out there making sure we make our mark here in Amherst, but also I think throughout Western Mass to say that this is where you can find an excellent education for all of your students because we're going to attend to that. So I thank you and I turn it back over to the superintendent.
I think, so one of the things we were taking deeply into consideration is marketing. I think Sarah Marshall in this section said, how are we marketing? How are we recruiting and retaining students? What are we looking at? And I think Tanya hit on it in talking about programmatic considerations. I think that Doreen hit on it where individuals already know us for our special education services, but we have to take into account the fact that what are our budgetary constraints and how that impacts us? And when she says seven parents, that's seven parents onto the number that came in. Like that was something we weren't prepared for because each one of those parents came with severe needs that we had to really adjust and pivot for, especially when it came budget-wise in terms of hiring additional staff, making sure we had the coverage that's there. We're still probably not 100% where we need to be. And so as we start to, to look at what we market and what we do, that's why it's really critical to say, how do we expand what we currently have? But how do we take that and also meet the needs of what we are seeing in terms of behaviors? In terms of, I guess, the three of them in terms of my academic supports, because that's what they, they kind of represent, have been working very diligently as a team also and individually to make sure that what's currently happening can bring us through to the end of the school year. But I do know it's hard to also project out knowing the budgetary impact and making sure that we can still run an adequate program for our elementary schools. So with that, I hand it over to the committee for questions.
Thank you. Yes, questions, committee member questions for the panelists or the superintendent?
Yeah, Dr. Z. Data is great. Presentations are great. Talking to the community is great. There's another layer, our, our, what is it? Our appropriating authority needs to have a respectful understanding of our decision-making. You know, it's very easy to read into large numbers skepticism about our special education program because it's not 100% clear to the skeptics what the numbers, what the bottom line is, represents. So as we continue to face budgetary pressures, I strongly encourage you to consider ways in which you can bridge that gap between their understanding and your decision-making and ways that we can support you in that.
So I would say that Deb, Doreen can be the number one person who has repeatedly heard me state to her how the SSO division impacts the budget. And then she is the number one person that pushes back on the programmatic impact or the legal impact of what we have to do. And so notwithstanding that I don't understand the legal impact and notwithstanding that I don't understand the programmatic portion, I also know that if we don't have the funding to put it forward, it provides us in a hardship. And so it's very hard to make decisions when you have to put all of that into play. And I know that her and I often have deep discourse around that and around what it looks like. And it often causes an impact to other divisions, right? Because if I have to choose between legally being bound by an IEP to provide one-on-one services to a student and a secretarial position at a school, I'm going to provide the direct student services because an IEP is a legally binding document that we have to abide by. And so we have a new IEP program. We've been looking at DESI reports. And we're looking at even how many students can we kind of sunset on our one-to-one services? And are we outgrowing certain services? Are we meeting the needs? Are we, what positions do we currently have that we are contracting out that we kind of need to shift the course load? So there's a lot of decisions and I don't know how to frame that in a way that individuals who are just looking at the bottom number would understand. But I do know that I have a very dedicated team. I have a great director. I have a, she has a dynamic support in her administrators. I know her assistants. So between Doreen, Joanne, Mary Ann, Anna, Nancy, they'll probably help me formulate that in a way. And I probably can charge them with doing that and they would do so. So that I can present that in a packaged way. So the individuals can understand the hardships of providing that legal, or meeting the legalities of an IEP.
Just to follow up. So I heard a rumor that I would like to be addressed in this context that we are over prescribing IEPs. So that rumor translates to a particular person saying, if somebody is entitled to a 25% service, they get 100%. And I said, don't think so, but don't know so. So again, I'm not asking you to answer that on the spot. If you want to, please do. But as part of the chatter out there, there's a narrative that-
There's a lot of chatter. But I, what I will say, and Doreen, I could piggyback, is that most recently we did have a training, Doreen, I think it was last, earlier this month, where the attorney came in and did a full training for the, all the leaders as well as the ETLs, the educational team leaders and psychologists at the schools, talking about the IEPs, talking about the IEP process and the development of the IEP. And making sure that it was clear around knowing the expertise in the room and a lot of times ensuring that the services are adequate and realistic and meet the needs of the students. Doreen, you want to expand on that?
I just want to also share that the IEP team is in fact a team, right? So there's a lot of discussion about the reports, about how the student is currently doing, about goal areas if the student becomes eligible. And we are always looking at least restrictive. We want students to be independent, successful, and ideally for some of our learners, if not a majority of our learners, to launch from a, to, from an IEP to perhaps a 504 for life after high school if they still need to access some accommodations. Rumors are rumors. And I would welcome a coffee session with anyone who has an impact on that. Deb, I'm happy to organize that with you.
Well, it's not me. Yeah, but, but if people are coming to you and sharing, we could also have a small subgroup. Thank you, Deb, for that. Jennifer.
So Tanya, you brought up class size. And I wanted to make sure you and the superintendent know, you probably already know that the school committee has a policy on class size. It's IIB, okay, good. So this has bubbled up for me over the years, which is that I feel like in the past, Amherst elementary class sizes have been smaller than the, than other schools in the region. Which is like, you know, a positive thing, obviously. But, but the, you know, the policy has, has a pretty big range and the policy is a preferred range, not a required range. So I, I wanted to put out there the, this idea that if, given that we are coming up to a very tight budget situation, if, if class size, if, if, you know, making classes slightly larger is something that could ease our budget situation, I feel like I'm just putting that out there as something to consider. You probably are already considering. And if it requires relooking at the policy, again, it's just a, it's a preference, not a requirement. You know, it was adopted in 2013. So it almost makes sense for the school committee to re, to just relook at the policy. I believe we now have a joint policy subcommittee that meets on that. What's that?
They, you, meet on Monday.
Yeah, okay, great. So I'm just putting that out there.
Thank you so much for that.
I think that it came up as a conversation piece when I first came in and speaking to one administrator. And I did read that it was a preference. I also know that right now, like realistically, when, when I think about class size, I not only think about teacher capacity, I think about the classroom capacity as well. Because a lot of our schools, like for example, Crocker Farm may not be able to hold as many students as Wildwood or even Fort River. But I do know that as we come up on budgetary constraints, it is going to be something that we have to kind of push upon. And we have to look too at the proportion of what a fully inclusive classroom looks like and the supports that are adequately in place for our students and our teachers to feel successful.
Irv.
I mean, these numbers that Doreen put out there, it's, it's shocking in some ways. Because when you talk about teaching and learning at, say, Crocker Farm, and you talk about class size at Crocker Farm, you got 30% of this, plus, 30% plus students on IEP. And you, and you consider that you might want to increase class sizes, then that logic doesn't flow. And, and the thing that is, that's so striking to me is that the populations, the demographics have changed so startlingly over the past two decades at the schools in such a way that has transformed the way classrooms are organized, how teaching is done, and more importantly, the allocation of resources. And I think that a lot of people in Amherst think, not in terms of what you just said, Doreen, in terms of Crocker Farm, that you've got 30% plus students on IEPs, that that number was not there 10 years ago. Just wasn't there. My kids went to Crocker Farm and I can assure you that that number was not there. And so it's almost going to be like, I guess what I want to say is that your task, the superintendent's task, is to educate the Amherst population in terms of what has transpired in our schools, in terms of the population at our schools and the needs that they present to us and what those needs mean budget-wise. You, you can't have a town council member who looks, who's been here for 20 years and who has bad kids in the school thinking that schools are the same. They are not the same. They just aren't. And when I heard that number, I thought, wow.
Thank you.
Thank all of you.
Thank you. I think I have questions for everybody. I'll try to be quick. So Maureen, at first I was thinking, oh, there's this pandemic, you know, related bulge of problems that will work itself through the system. But then you said that's not the case, that incoming students have, there's high rates of behavioral, yeah, behaviors requiring intervention. And I wonder whether, because I believe socio-emotional learning is embedded throughout the elementary curriculum, if teachers need more training or, not that they can handle every kind of behavior. But are they, are they adjusting, being helped to adjust to the new, new suite of student presentation?
To be honest, I think the issue is that students got used to being at home during the pandemic and that that's become a bit of a habit that when they get upset or they get, they struggle a little bit. What we see is that our challenges are with a lot of the students who have a lot, a high absent rate. And, and then we have to work, it's not so much what's happening when they're in the classroom because we have great teachers. And the teachers, the teachers are trying to address all the needs. Our teachers are very dynamic in Amherst. They're very skilled and they know how to pivot. You know, a math teacher, an elementary school teacher, they know how to embed the social, emotional learning in their classroom. I think our biggest challenge, and it's been creeping up for years and years and then we had the pandemic, is that kids discovered that being at home feels really good. And that's, that's a new phenomenon for students. That's not something that any of us had experienced prior to this. And so I'll speak to my work in that a lot of the work I'm doing with principals and counselors, it's how do, how do we get the kids in school and keep them here once they stay home for whatever reason? And then the anxiety is just, it's different now than it was even 10 years ago. It's that students, if something happens and they feel like they can't come into school, the longer they're out, the harder it is to get them back in. And, you know, phones have changed the world. There, you know, there's research across the globe that says the entire world changed when iPhones came out. It's not just the United States, it's everywhere. And, and young kids have phones. And so, you know, they stay up late, they don't wake up. It's hard to get them up even though we changed, you know, this is more of a region issue. We changed the start time for the region. But we could talk about this for hours, what has changed in the last 10 years. It's not just the pandemic. Social media has changed the world for kids. You know, they can go to bed at night and things can be fine and they can wake up in the morning and 100 of their friends were posting about them and they can't go to school because of it. And then we're, we're off and running with bullying reports and investigations and, and it just, it goes on and on and on. It's, it's very, very challenging these days with all the factors that are coming into play. And it's, kids are more sophisticated now too. The student that Doreen and I talked with today, I, was a 10-year-old who was, she said, you know, this is what I'm struggling with, this is what's happening with my friends, this is why this one's doing this, this is the leader, this is how she's using social aggression. I mean, I was shocked. I mean, I was shocked at how sophisticated this young person was. And and we did some role-playing about, you know, ways to do things differently. She was completely open and eager to do it, but that was two directors sitting with someone for an hour. You know, that's the staff, they don't have the time to do that. And so our biggest challenge, I think, right now is that high rates of anxiety, social media, phone use, and in keeping kids in school. If we could, if we could find a miracle that would keep kids in school and would reduce the high absent rate, we would, we would change the world.
My question for Doreen, you spoke about out-of-district placements, and so I didn't know which way that runs. Is this Amherst students needing services that they can't get here and we're sending them out? Or is it students from other towns coming here?
Thanks for the question. So it's our students who need an extreme level of support that the district cannot offer.
And is that because we haven't been able to hire somebody to do it? Or because I know that's been one problem, or or even so, it's beyond anything we would be?
It's beyond. It's beyond. It's a significant social emotional issue. We have students in hospitals. We have students in residential care. We have students with significant needs across the district. And we and we meet with them often. We hold me, we're mandated to hold meetings minimally yearly, and so we can always touch base and again pivot. If a student's ready to come back, we're lucky at the high school level and the middle school level. We have Summit Academy, which has been a tremendous resource for the district, tremendous. We also have our student support programs in in not only the elementary, we have Building Blocks. At the middle school, we have SSP. At the high school, we have SSP. And we also have the STEPS program, which is a more self-contained program for students with emotional dysregulation. We have a a large number of supportive specialized programs in district.
Doreen, everyone doesn't speak acronyms.
I know.
Student Support Program, so that Student Support Program is SSP. Building Blocks, not an acronym, just Building Blocks. Right? And our STEP program, it's it's basically it's a self-contained educational program.
Is there still also BRIGHT?
Yes.
Yep. I know. We, yeah, we still. Resilient Youth in Transition.
Yeah, we still have it at the high school. Yeah, we have a new clinician at the high school running BRIGHT, and we have Karen Peters, who was at the high school for ten years, who transferred to the middle school this year, and she's running a very robust program at the middle school this year. Yeah, she's doing a fantastic job. And Haley is our new clinician at the high school, doing a great job, and she's now shifting into doing a lot of tier-two work, because we had, we had, we had to do some budget shifts, and Haley's taking on some additional responsibilities in addition to BRIGHT, and Karen's also doing the same at the middle school.
Wonderful. My question for for Tanya. So you were talking about continuing ed for for teachers. I forget what you P, professional.
Professional development.
I thought I heard PE, okay. PD. And but then you talked about covering the classes, so this PE happens, PD happens during the school day? And so they have to leave their classes, is that?
So currently, in elementary, so we have excellent teachers across all of our districts, and they are just committed, and we have excellent principal staff that really supports that learning. And what'll happen is, let's say, for some curriculum training, which is specifically what's happening now, so we have our curriculum training that happens during the day because of the way it was scheduled this year. And so it's the rotation. So K to to one comes in the morning, and then two comes in the afternoon. And so what that means is that we have to have coverage. It's the way it worked out this year, and this was planned prior to the start of the school year. And so one of the things, I think, as we consider FY26 is, how do we create professional development time that allows educators to really engage with it in a way that's not really pulling their focus? Because most educators want to be with their kids. They love the learning, but they want to be with their kids, and principals want to honor that. So we, I think, as in central office, have to make sure that we're working with our, you know, our educators and our leaders to ensure that we provide them with time to get professional development, but one that does not impact the school day. And so I think that's one of the things we should be looking at, since it was about FY26 considerations. I think that's something we should consider.
Thank you. Anyone else? Bridget?
So I'm just really happy with this team and to know that that everyone's looking at all the different dimensions of things, and I don't walk away with a lot of questions. There's one thing that always comes to my mind whenever we talk about special ed that somehow just gets under my skin a little bit. I think people say, oh, we've got so much need in special ed because kids are moving here from other places. And one thing I want to say is like, our averages are not high statewide. When I'm in other schools, they feel just like what you're describing, sometimes even harder scenarios. And and so I'm I'm not sure. Maybe you have data that shows that specifically, but I'm not sure that's a narrative that serves us as a school committee, because then people say, oh, well, let's cut them and people will stop coming. But that's really not true, and I mean, honestly, many people in Amherst could look at the fact we have an older demographic of parents, so that always increases the amount of special ed. And even then, we're very close to statewide averages. So I don't know, I just feel like that's something we should, before we sort of repeat an offset phrase, that it's something we should think about and see if the data's there.
Deb?
Yeah, so I'm thrilled that Karen is at the middle school, that just, you know, that that's going to make my night. But back to money weeds. So the transportation part of special education is something that is also not well-understood and well-reimbursed. So I'm just saying that there's lots of pieces that my advocacy brain wants to see shed, but brought to the light of day.
And I hand it over to Doreen.
Could I just say one thing about Karen Peters? It was very intentional to try to get her to the middle school. There's, you know, we did a lot of assessments last year about what what is working and what is not. And Karen, like Ruthie, is another gem. Her clinical skills are just off the charts. And she's been around for a long time. She, you know, ran BRIGHT for ten years at the high school, and and there did seem to be, we had a newer counseling staff at the middle school, so it felt like we had a very, very veteran staff at the high school. We didn't have veteran counseling staff at the middle school. That was a need that we saw. And we we recruited hard to get Karen down to the middle school so that we could get, have a very robust BRIGHT program at the middle school, because if we could get them a little stronger coming out of the middle school, they would be more successful at the high school. So that was, I'm glad that you mentioned that, because that was an intentional plan to bring Karen to the middle school, and we're very grateful that she's there.
And I don't want to throw Doreen a hundred percent under the bus with this, but
Oh, no pun intended.
I know. But
Maureen gave her two minutes to think. That was intentional.
I know. But know that, one, we do have a transportation RFP that's going out. So we are doing that, and we are working with a consultant to help us in terms of our routes and that RFP. Also, the Special Education Division, SSO Division, has been really vigilant in helping me understand the bus routes. One of the things I need us to understand, too, is how our overarching schedule affects the services that we are able to provide and the in terms of our drivers as well as the contracted drivers. So I'll let Doreen hit a little bit.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Z, and just a shout out to Mary Ann Gignak, who is actually on that committee to look into the transportation. It would behoove us as a district to have our own employees transport our students who are out of district. It would be a cost-saving measure. If Rupert was here, he would probably tell me that we don't have enough vans to do that, and I'm not sure if we have enough drivers, but it would be a very big cost-saving measure for us to be able to provide that for our students.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very important and interesting information.
Thank you, all of you. Very good.
And you will post or send to us some of it?
It is posted.
It is posted. Thank you.
Okay, great.
All right.
On Doreen, your data. They would need your data.
I'll, okay.
Thank you. All right, so now returning or moving to some items that hopefully we can dispose of quickly. The first is to now seek this committee's approval for the letter that Bridget and I and Tillman Wolf drafted to submit as a public comment to DESI regarding Pioneer Valley Chinese Immersion Charter Schools' request to expand its enrollment by a hundred seats. So we discussed the discuss this letter, it's the same letter, at the regional school committee, and the region passed it, but now it has to come before the Amherst School Committee, since both committees are mentioned as as submitting this. So does anyone have any any further comment on this letter? I will point out there is one conforming change. It does differ in the first paragraph, the last end, the final sentence. Superintendent E. Z. Omara Herman supports this request.
I do.
Thank you. You said so last week. I was hoping you still did, so, all right. Yes?
I think it's excellent work, and I thank everybody involved in making it come.
I forgot to thank you, because you you had, Deb is, as we know, deep into data and could push push some information our way. It's very helpful. In that case, could someone move to approve it?
I move to approve the letter. Do I have to say more?
No.
No, I I move to approve the letter as presented to the committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Then all in favor? Thank you. All right, moving on. Similarly, the region discussed and then endorsed a resolution calling on the Commonwealth to underwrite charter school tuition and school choice. So Deb has made a new version that is specific to the Amherst School Committee, and maybe some other tweaks, but it is it is basically the same thing.
I keep, I keep, I keep trying to look up how many people have signed it, and I can't get on to it. So as of last week, we had a hundred and seventy-six signatures in support of the General Mass Promise to Invest Initiative, of which this referendum is based.
Right. All right. I will move to approve this. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any more comments? All in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you. All right. Elementary school handbooks. I don't believe we need to vote on them.
No.
I checked.
Okay.
But we still want to discuss them.
Yes.
Give you input.
So I know there was a lot of discussion around the elementary school handbooks, and the conversation came up, we were back and forth about the approval of the handbooks. But what really needed to happen, I think at the region, they have to approve the handbook, but I know that I wanted feedback, so that as the principals are revising for the upcoming school year, if there's any areas that you as committee members feel like we need to expand upon or give feedback on, or something that needs to be inputted, because we were back and forth on approval of the handbook. So you have all three handbooks that have been released to parents for this school year. The idea is to review and give us any feedback from the committee level for the upcoming school year revisions to be handed out.
So who has comments or suggestions?
I have a question.
Deb, that's a question. Go.
I missed it because of the the mic issue, but when are we reviewing it for? Because I think we're supposed to review it in the spring.
Right, and so the idea is that this is the handbook that, the handbooks that were given out this year. From the time I came in, I've been asked by all three chairs for the handbooks to approve. I found out that the handbooks across all three districts were already dispersed to parents. So the idea is, these are the current handbooks. You can start reviewing to give feedback, so that I can give feedback to the principals and so that when we update them, it can be ready for the spring for final review and approval.
And when do we give you our feedback?
I'll go through the chair, and we could set a deadline.
Well, yes, please. I mean, if you have any maybe broad comments to make now, go ahead. I have some. But if you have more specific comments, why don't you email them to me? Make sure you're telling me which handbook you're talking about, and then I'll compile them all.
I just need a deadline.
A deadline.
I do.
Well?
I'm sorry.
Okay.
How about before our December meeting? No.
How about a little further out?
Yeah, I was going to say, we've got too many holidays. How about by the end of January? Thank you. Does anyone else want to make a comment at this time about them?
Bridget?
Just very quickly, I'm wondering how many languages are distributed in?
I know for sure English and I think Spanish. I have to confirm. But I think in the upcoming year, once they're distributed through parents' square, it can be transcribed, but I'm not sure. So I do know I have received English and Spanish versions of them. And that's a really great question to determine in terms of the other languages that they're available.
Two of the handbooks have what looks to my eye like Chinese of some variety, and maybe in several different languages. Some information, including phone numbers, and maybe that's all that is provided. But then there is a statement about you can you can ask for a Spanish translation. So I'll I'll give my two big comments. One is that they're quite inconsistent. I mean, they contain a lot of the same information. They contain similar information that you might expect to be the same, like our district mission. So the but but then they all contain different things, and they're differently organized. So that, to me, suggests at least three teams of people worked on these, and that just seems really inefficient. And there ought to be, like, here's the template, here's the standard information, and here are ways that each school can customize. One thing, so that's one comment. Because so much of it is policy, and it is procedures that are that are the same. Some things have to differ, like the parent pickup procedures, especially at Fort River as as construction gets underway. But then my other thought has to do with marketing. Anyone who may be considering enrolling a child in our schools is probably going to go to the website and look. I mean, I do this. I want to know, because it's been a long time since I had a kid at Wildwood, what's it like now? And this is what they're going to find. And so even though it's for families whose kids are already there, the more it can it can also be written and designed through the lens of attracting, of advertising the fabulous programs, and the ways in which each school differ, and you know, what are their particular character or style or their mottos or whatever. I think it was the Wildwood handbook has a little school profile, which is great, and I, but it was only that handbook, not the others, not the other schools. So you know, it's more work, obviously, to start incorporating additional information. And I would say even photographs, and you know, that it's, it really can also be a marketing tool, a student retention and enrollment tool. And, you know, you can always have a a graphics light version for people to download, you know, if they don't want all the photos. So I have other pickier things, but but they all fall under those two headings.
Awesome. I think as we have our, because we've, I've shifted my meetings in terms of how I engage with the principals and and the staff. We've been working on this for some time. When we pull the principals together, we'll talk about about that from that lens, and we can provide the final feedback once it's collected from from the committee.
Jennifer?
I just had a comment on on your comments, Sarah, about the fact that they're not consistently formatted or structured. I I think, I don't think we should push for consistency for the sake of consistency, and so I wouldn't want to see additional work put into having some And so, I wouldn't want to see additional work put into having someone create a template and then pushing it out and then having them, having each school change their handbook. I think if we were starting from zero, we would we would do that. That would make sense. But since each school already has a handbook, I don't think, at this, my opinion at this point doesn't really make sense to make them be consistent. I I think, I agree that they had some consistent elements, like they all had the same information about discipline and the levels and that was great. I guess, so, I I don't, it doesn't, it doesn't really bother me that they're organized differently because there are three different teams that put them together. That being said, I hope that each team sees the other two schools' handbooks so that they might say, oh, we should put that in our handbook too, just so that they can have some cross pollination between the ideas of all three teams.
Well, I'm, like I said, I'm not sure, but I'm thinking, the one thing that I would say, and I can say this about the elementary principals, I can probably say this about the region as well, but I know this is AMERST, this is an AMERST meeting, is that I witnessed coming in a camaraderie and collaboration amongst them. They share information. They email each other. They have discussion. So, I would not be surprised if they didn't share information, but still wanted to keep it organic to who they are, like Crocker Farm Cares, there's a Wildwood Star, you know, and and, you know, we have our Fort River and and just like everything that happens. So, I would say that I I can, based on what I've seen in terms of how Tammy, Allison, and Derek interact and work as colleagues, that there is a collaboration that that occurred. I think that they also opted to keep to the organic roots of who the schools that they lead represent and how they move forward in terms of their teams. But I do think that we can have that, I can get that clarity in the conversation with the three of them.
Any other comments at this time? Alright, so I'll send out a reminder that any any comments you do develop, you'll email to me by the end of January. Alright, thank you. Alright, moving on to business not reasonably anticipated 48 hours in advance. So, this item is, we have before us because of what happened at last night's town council meeting, I gather, and maybe maybe Deb was there or others were there for the entire meeting, that council did not approve all the requests to appropriate funds outside the annual operating budget. And those are, these are for town things, not school things. But what that means is that there is, in essence, maybe some money left on the table that AMERST and/or the region could ask for, for some specific purpose. So, I had I had a lengthy message from one of the town councillors on this subject. I don't know that we've done this before, so I'm not really sure how to proceed. I've, Dr. Z is aware of this and I floated some ideas, but I wonder what you all think. And 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 this councillor was suggesting, and maybe it's just her perception, that we we might be more likely to have a request approved if it were for something not not specifically like a typical capital thing, but maybe a smaller capital thing that could relieve some pressure on our operating budget. Dr. Z has thoughts?
Yes.
Yes.
So, of course, when I got the emails, I was very excited. I was like, oh, this is awesome. This is really, really great and it sounds like money. And I sat with my team. One, I did ask everyone from the Capitol End, so I asked, I asked Rupert, asked Jerry, asked Rupert, asked Mike Gallo, all three, like, hey. Oh, okay. You good? You can hear me? Oh, we need a two minutes. Okay.
Alright, we're recessing for two minutes. I think a tech problem. So, Dr. Z, you were talking about what you and your team discussed today as far as possible requests?
Yes. So, we did come up with with a list of things that would look great. I didn't get to go thoroughly through them, but I think that there are ways that that could assist. However, the intent of identifying a 500,000 worth of costs to relieve our operating costs is not realistic because we do not budget capital in operating. Our capital is budgeted separately. So, that is a separate budget. Our operating cost is is what we've been talking about in terms of our contractual services, our personnel. So, we are grateful for it, we definitely, but it will not relieve or assist us in terms of what we are facing budgetarily. And that was the reality of it when all of the excitement calmed down of the day. And so, realistically, what it would, what would help us is to really have that that commitment to that previous budget, that 6% and to stem off from there. And still, if they still want to give us the capital in addition to it, that sounds great too. But realistically, there is nothing that, at this point, that will not relieve it because we do not budget capital with operating.
Alright, so we need to keep the discussion here focused on the elementary district. So, are there any questions before I ask one? Bridget?
I do.
Yeah?
So, last year when we received the budget book, in the budget book, there were several line items that it seems likely that could be deferred by some capital costs. The first one was energy and the energy costs for the school district will be lower, obviously, at the new school building, but at Crocker Farm, there's still high electrical and higher like heating costs that could be deferred if there were solar siding or something of that sort, or upgrade to heat pumps or that type of thing. So, that's one. I'm just going to go through a short list because these are things that were in the budget that we passed. So, the costs could be deferred.
And this is the AMERST, the AMERST budget?
You mean defrayed?
Defrayed is the proper term.
Not putting them off, but reducing them.
It could reduce the line items that we spend year over year if we could diminish the costs in those particular categories.
Okay.
The question of the trash truck, it used to be that AMERST collected the trash for all the schools and then the trash truck, it used to be called Big Bird, broke down. And when Big Bird broke down, AMERST stopped doing that and we contracted for trash and that trash contract raised our costs. I, Deb, you might remember the exact number, but it was somewhere around 40 or 50,000, right? Do you know the?
Yeah.
I haven't looked at it since last spring.
At the very end, I, at the very end, there's an asterisk next to that because some of that we had to purchase dumpsters for. So, it's not the service, but I can find out.
Right.
So.
I want to.
Just one more and then I'll I'll go to you, which is just the IT. Like, one thing that people were mentioning is that a lot of the town IT costs, especially like things like the website and that, infrastructure cost, they put in this budget, the, in their capital budget, and could we include the schools in those ways? Now, you might have different information than I do. I just know you weren't here last year when we went line by line through the budget, so I wanted to share.
No, thank you. And I want to say that what you're, what you're sharing echoes what I collected from my team in terms of the projections already, in terms of what we could do. There was also the conversation around the IT in terms of what Jerry suggested was the fact that we may need to update our network cabling in in the schools. And so, there is a series of of projects that I had, I got from each individual in terms of the, what was received this year versus what we may need to look at next year. And I know it was a quick turnaround ask. Like, I got the information midday and I sent them an email like, hey, guys, can you tell me what we can do in terms of capital next year? Because I knew that this was going to be a part of the conversation. I think the other thing that we would want to be mindful of, and I, and as we delve into that and we really need to be, and I say this because what we can end up in is very much similar to what has happened with all ARPA funds in school districts, is that you get a one-time gift or allotment and you move something off of your budget and then your budget is alleviated. But that is not a one-time cost. And when it comes time to put it back in, you you didn't adequately plan. So, I would say that if we had to, let's not have something that is service-based or frequent. We would need to make sure we budget on. It would have to be something that can be a one-time cost, impactful to services so that our schools can operate clearly. So, that would be the only thing that I would want to to kind of move away from in terms of if we look at energy, if we look at defraying the trash truck, like those types of things. Those are not one-time services. No, I, no, I was just, I was adding to like, okay, if those are in the budget book, I can see, but I I will delve into, and I'm actually in conversation right now, Sarah Marshall is laughing because I'm actually, like, I'm chatting with with Shannon right now like, hey, what about this? What about this? And so, we're having a deep discussion as we go. But I really want us to know that I I think that we need to delve into, look clearly at the budget book and also try to avoid what we are now nationwide calling the COVID slide, like, you know, that that dip in terms of finances and see what can we defray operationally that would be a one-time cost versus something that would have potential long-term impact that we should plan for.
Yeah, I would just, just quick, quick follow-up, which is, that's why we were looking specifically. They're already at the question of something sustainable.
Right.
Either the heat pumps or because that would defer year over year or the trash truck, which would last at least the life of the truck, right?
I promised to get an answer. I don't remember what Anna's deadline was.
Well, there, that's the thing. There isn't, hold on, there isn't a clear deadline and the same conversation may, if Sarah Bes wants to have it, we can have it at a regional meeting too. It's not like $500,000 just just for us. So, so we're starting a conversation. I'm sure if you have ideas, you know, there'll be time to think about them. And we should engage with the councillors and make sure we have a clear understanding of like, really? No capital? Because, yeah.
So many questions. One of them is the fire alarm at Crocker Farm and what is our capital budget? I don't, I've never seen, that I'm aware of, a budget for the elementary schools for capital costs. Sarah knows?
Alright, and Jennifer can help. I think that's what JCPC is for. And there is a, like a 10-year, excuse me.
That's part of my questions because JCPC, the 10-year plan, if you actually go cost it out and you look at what the schools are supposed to get over the years and what they're supposed to get year after year after year, it is not clear at all that the schools are getting the things they're scheduled to get if you go over the five-year step, number one. Number two, the councillors made it exceedingly clear that the districts, the districts, which includes AMERST, have not been, well, there's a process, right? So, there's the representatives for the JCPC and then it's, eventually, people prioritize different things and Paul submits the requests and that's what they use this fund called Cash Capital for. And there is, at the end of that process, an observation that the schools, and AMERST is the only one that can work with JCPC, have not made requests. And then it was suggested perhaps they had, but the requests don't go all the way through. And then one of the town councillors on the JCPC said no, that the schools have not been making requests for capital. School, I'm sorry, no, us, we, the AMERST School Committee. So, my question is, is our 10-year plan realistic as it fits in? What is our advocacy at JCPC? And is there follow-through on those plans? And how does that fit in with this particular opportunity? Because I'm just going to say, unlike us, the region cannot avail themselves of that 6.7 million dollars that is distributed through the sectors of the government from the AMERST Town Budget Line. I think it's 6.7 million.
Well, yeah, varies. Any other comments or questions?
I'd just say, I think that that's one thing that on the Financial Sustainability Committee we were talking about, is we'd like to be looped in and included on the JCPC. Like, what's their timeline for requests? How do people know when to move forward with it? That type of thing, because now you're doing those types of things for for next year. And then how does that all fit in? That type of thing, because now you're doing those types of things for, for next year, and then how does that all fit in? Again, you know, I'm mostly interested in capital that can reduce our costs overall because all the neighboring districts, Hadley, South Hadley, our competitive advantage is being diminished if we don't move forward with those.
Irv, you look like you want to. Jennifer and I are. So I could, Jennifer, were you on it previous years? So maybe you know, but I have no idea who submitted. I assume it was the interim superintendent, or maybe facility, or it didn't, I don't think it came through the school committee, the requests or the, or the, you know, wants, the wish list that ends up in this five or ten-year schedule. I, I don't know if those have ever come through the school committee, maybe they should. So that's something we can talk about at another time.
Council made it very clear that, um, we should do that. And just in terms of as soon as possible, because in terms of the planning for the town as a whole, the intention, as they presented the four-year, the four-building project, is to possibly have all four projects. The new elementary school building, the Jones Library renovation and expansion, the fire station slash EMS, and the DPW completed by twenty twenty-three. No, twenty thirty, twenty thirty, not twenty twenty-three, twenty thirty. So money will only get tighter. I didn't quite understand what they were talking about, but it looks like possibly the capital line in the Amherst budget will be about half. So all of the JCPC requests look to me, and not a hundred percent, so if I get it wrong, I'm sorry, look to me like it's going to be three million. That everything that goes through JCPC is going to be limited to three million dollars a year.
Maybe Jennifer and I should discuss how, how we might like to change the JCPC process, and, yeah, we'll do that.
Okay, and then just, yeah, solar, I mean, Bridgette's always talking about solar, any little bit of solar. And I, I understand we need to repave something or re-roof something to get solar on it, but maybe we could do that. I know the original parking lot out, was out here, was, oh, no, never mind.
Region, region.
Okay, yeah, there's a lot for Crocker in that, um, in that, uh, in the JCPC plan. And again, it'd be great to find out if what's planned is being implemented, because I'm not sure it is.
Um, I think the ten-year, yeah, I think it's, I have the impression that the wish lists are just spread out, but every year, the, you know, council ends up deciding only on that year. There's no commitment to, this is how we're going to do it over ten years. It's, each year is, has to.
And, and of those appropriations, the schools have a very small percentage of it. Ninety percent of those appropriations go to general government.
Right, so, which means perhaps that this committee needs to be more involved in how that, the wish list is generated, and then advocating for it. I didn't really, how do I advocate, didn't know these were our wishes, so Bridgette?
We have a ten-year, um, capital plan for the school district that was in the budget book last year, and I'm going to just say, I don't remember whether it's the one for the region or the one for the elementary, but when I looked over them, it seemed like we really are heavy in like fiscal year twenty-nine, fiscal year thirty, and some of those things are things that would defer operating, especially in terms of energy, if they were just moved up a little, so other places to look.
Okay, well, I don't think there's anything more we can do now, except, um, maybe I and the superintendent will learn more about what council might, or counselors might or might not consider as, um, reasonable. Yeah, okay, so that's it for that item. So now future agenda planning. I do actually have, I, I'll want your suggestions, but I do, um, want to mention two things that'll be on December's agenda. One is the superintendent's entry plan findings, and I imagine that's a discussion, not just a here are my findings. So that will be a significant topic on our agenda. The other is, um, that I heard just today from Stephanie Chicorelli, who you know works for the town, is she's the one, the one woman's sustainability slash climate action person, who tells me that the school committee, this school committee adopted a policy back in twenty-eleven, revised in twenty-twelve and twenty-thirteen, that is not in our policy manual. And it is a commitment to, let me get the language, commitment to a zero emissions vehicle first fleet policy. And the town of Amherst also has it. I, I don't know about the library, if that's like the three main parts of the town. But having signed on to that policy back in twenty-eleven or whatever made the town of Amherst eligible for some, to, to compete, I think, for some funding around, um, energy efficiency initiatives. And Stephanie says there's now an opportunity to, uh, get qualified, I, I don't know if it's compete to, to enter, or just automatically enter, if we can do the work in time, qualify for a program that, uh, can provide even larger subsidies or offsets. I don't know how the financing work. So basically, what she's, she and the town are hoping is that at our December meeting, because it is due by December thirty-first, we can approve a revised zero emissions vehicle first fleet policy. And she has sent me a whole bunch of documents, and I think what I need to do is send them to you tomorrow, along with her email, and ask you to email me within two weeks. I, I'll, I'll be more specific. Any questions you have about the policy, about the program? I've asked her to come to the meeting in December, but the more questions she can answer ahead of time, then the better informed we can be about this policy. I also try to figure out how come, or how to get it into our policy manual, I was quite mystified by this. So that'll be another major agenda item.
Point of order?
Yes.
Wouldn't we refer it to the joint policy subcommittee to review?
This is an Amherst-only policy.
But it's, I don't remember where we stood on that, did we?
That's for joint, that's for policies that are, are all, that are going to apply for all three districts. If they're Amherst only, we would do our own thing, so. All right, any questions about that? So obviously, we can't confer about this material and everything that I send to you, and, you know, the questions, the answers, whatever, I'll post it all to the, uh, December agenda. So is there anything else people would like to talk about in December, aside from those two items? You can always, you can always email me. Maybe, maybe Jennifer and I could have some ideas about JCPC then, because I, when did that get going? That was like March, February? Dr. Z, can you think of anything else we should be ready to hear or discuss?
Uh, not yet, I think by the time our planning meeting comes on.
It'll, it'll fill up again.
Okay.
All right.
Oh, yeah, I do, I do know, I remembered now. I believe that apparently naming the new building, the elementary school building, is a process that's not short. And then there's the sixth grade move that we haven't discussed of late.
That's for next year.
Okay.
Meeting, year?
No, next year.
The whole thing?
Oh, literally next year. We're working with, um, because the major concern was Fort River.
Yeah.
So we're working with Fort River, um, to see what we can do. Yeah, we, I, I, we can talk about sixth grade. And the whole redistricting? Like, the whole sixth grade and what that looks like.
Okay, in December, yeah. Okay, was there anything else? All right, in that case, we could have a motion to adjourn? Nobody?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, not debatable, so all in favor? Say aye, thank you.